Call to order. I'll call the September third, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting to order at seven P M. John, will you please call the roll?
Sure, Commissioner Hankins.
Here.
Commissioner Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Tarasus.
Here.
Commissioner Benaziac.
Here.
And Commissioner Billingsley.
Here.
All right, you have five present, you have a four.
Thank you. Pointing of an acting chair. I will entertain a motion to appoint an acting chair.
So.
Uh.
And then.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say to move to appoint.
An acting chair, a specific person as the chair, I guess.
So it can be Brad.
And since I'm sitting here.
That is practice and bar and prepping until we only have to say a few words.
Yeah, here you go.
So I move to appoint Brad Hankin as the temporary chair for today's meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say A.
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 Or I? Those opposed say nay. Brad Hankin will serve as acting chair. Can we all stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody for public comment? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak about a topic not on the agenda? So. Approval of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the draft for July first, twenty twenty five meeting minutes.
Quote.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed, nay?
I got that correction.
There you go. We got a I now. Uh. Public hearing of case P C twenty five fifteen. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case P C twenty five fifteen.
I'll make that version.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Yeah, let's see, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Acting chair, sorry, John, please give us a background after being sworn in.
Right.
Sound this where I will firm taking out these proceedings. Truthfully, I don't know.
I do. All right, thank you. All right, um, it's a request from Dale Hammersmith of Frame Industries for an amendment to an existing special use permit at eight hundred West Washington Street in the manufacturing district. Subject property is principally used as a warehouse facility for Frame Industries for its wholesale and equipment supplier operation. The property received a special use permit earlier this year for outside storage of rough shingle materials associated with one of Brain's businesses, which is R F J Packaging. Brain is now requesting approval of an amendment to the special use permit to expand the outside storage area to include Tesla vehicles. These vehicles were brought in prior to the submission of a special use permit application. So the property owner was notified, they were issued a notice of violation with an order to submit the application for the special use permit. The petitioner has indicated that Tesla has a lease for an office space within the building at eight hundred West Washington Street. Although no screening is required by code for outside storage of vehicles, Plan Commission may wish to consider this as a condition of the special use permit to or amendment to screen the vehicles from view along Washington Street. Staff also suggests that a condition be added that a certificate of occupancy for Tesla's office space be filed within five days of approval. Staff has drafted findings of fact included within the staff report as well as the suggested conditions. We do have the petitioner present this evening to provide additional information, answer any questions, and I can answer the questions at this time.
Would the petitioner like to give a presentation?
It's not necessary.
Okay.
Um. Are there any questions for the petitioner?
Yes. Does he have to be sworn in?
Yes, yes, to stand up if you can please come up to the podium and then he'll swear you in name and address, please.
Dale Hammersmith, one N by forty Center Avenue of West Chicago.
So can can you explain what the situation is? Because there's a little bit of stuff here and and requirement for a certificate of occupancy by Tesla, but that should really explain what the whole scenario is.
So Tesla had come to us to the that this specific property due to the available parking that was looked into Google Maps and requested to be able to work out an arrangement to be able to stage Tesla vehicles there. And then from there, uh, be more of a Midwest center spot. The cars come in greatly off the train rail over on the uh, just over there by Roosevelt and where Geneva intersect. And I don't know what they were doing in the past, but it was really convenient as far as to bring the cars to our location. So we negotiated with Tesla. Um, it's not originally with as far as the appearance, it's not just a storage facility. They moved their actual operations so that it's it's quite an operation. But they actually coordinate all these cars once they get off. They have a team of personnel that actually shuttles the car over to our facility and then no guarantee any specific car, but as many cars to come in, then I'm surprised in weeks they actually turn around and go out of transporters. The other thing that was advantageous for our property is that all of the movement, not just the cars themselves, but the unloading of transporters and also all the shuttling of the vehicles, everything is enclosed or say lock gates. We don't utilize the town road or Washington Street for any part of the equation of removing or staging cars.
Okay, how do they get there?
The so literally they'll come out, there's two ways. And they'll come up as you've seen on different train cars where those cars have all these, the train cars have all these cars in there. They're unloaded at the wherever the yard is, which is very close here. I don't know how that process goes, but then let's say there's twenty cars. There's a team of Tesla people in one van that'll put literally ten people in the van, go over there, pick up ten cars, drive them over to our facility, drop them off, the van follows, picks people up, brings them back over, and that's how they stage cars from there. If they come in, as everybody has seen, truck transporters, the transporters can, uh, because of weight, but a transporter can carry as many as nine different cars regardless of what kind they are. And the transporters will come into the yard and then the driver can actually unload the cars hisself and then they'll put them in a staged parking spot.
Although coming down Washington against your facility.
Yeah, they'll come down Washington, then they turn on Town Road, they come to the south entrance right there by the train tracks, and that's where everything is brought in and out. Stay off.
So Washington and Town Line are truck runs, John? Washington is and Town, yes, Town.
Road is up to the railroad tracks and then there's a stated sign and mode limits on the other side of the railroad track. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions for or from the public or any comments? If there are no more questions from the planning commission and no one else from the public wishes to speak, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing or if anybody from the commissioners have anything else to say.
One of the residents.
There was, there was a correspondence that we received from a business that is nearby on Washington Street that is in the back of. From Rob Elliott, Elliott Construction.
And what was his?
Uh, so, so through an email on July twenty fourth, Mr. Elliott stated, we are one of the owners of the properties on the north side of Washington Street, directly north of the Hammersmith property at eight hundred West Washington. We have worked hard along with the city administration to develop this western entrance to the city, enhancing the properties along the north side of Washington Street. We strongly object to allowing outside storage along the west side of the building and allowing any storage on the south side if visible from Washington Street. Thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns. Sincerely, Rob Elliott.
It didn't offer any reason why?
Um, no.
May I have one additional time?
I'm forward.
When we first, when I first came in and applied for the amendment could be a special permit, uh, it was upfront in writing that we would be possibly asked to uh, put the privacy curtain fence up.
Effect.
Along with the applying for the occupancy. Not waiting for this hearing, we did put privacy fence up all along the front edge on Washington. I know I was reading and I didn't look at the pictures, but the that the cars were visible at the time that the pictures were taken, but there's no visibility from Washington Street whatsoever, no town road.
So that you said it's just what's facing Washington or also it's on the on the west side that draws north, south, I mean, west.
No, there's, if you go from, uh, if you go from Roosevelt Road and come up to Town Road, there's no visibility for any vehicles or anything or shingle or anything back there. We have done the privacy fence. We extended to the point where even when you come up to the office area and look sideways, we even have that blocked up. And then we've also blocked up the self part so that there's no visibility to interfere with anybody. Because I do appreciate, uh, the same way with us, we have the property on the other side also at seven oh four and we do a lot to maintain the presence of the building and VR and everything else because the whole, the whole road does look really good.
How many, just in curiosity, how many vehicles are you entertaining on your property over there?
Uh, probably. Three hundred.
Oh.
Up to three hundred.
Yes, this is.
And I take it they're moving out based on when they're needed or whatever and rotating?
Yes, sir. The object on the, uh, because I have different questions, the lease, which we did turn a lease into John before all of this happened, so it is very upfront. It's a real business type thing, but there is substantial, uh, charges for the cars to actually sit there. But definitely it's, it truly is drop center. Uh, so we'll have possibly say three hundred cars, but they're literally in motion. I'll I'll say daily, but here deep weekly, you you'll see different colors, different models. I mean, it's, it's amazing how much hours, how much manpower we're close into this that obviously it's passed on to all of us as consumers for motor vehicles.
Is that like a regular business hours type thing or is that send down today?
No, the it's, uh, it's pretty much, um, it's pretty much during daylight hours because it makes it a lot easier as far as the moving the cars in and out, you know, as far as the visibility. Uh, we do have lighting in the parking lot, uh, as far as for security, cameras and things like that. But the all the motion is in the daytime hours where they have the.
These gates, do they open as people come and go or they open during?
No, we have, uh, Tesla has invested quite a bit into the property. So there are key pads and remotes and only Tesla organization, obviously, so um, can access to gates. On the other hand, we do have the lockbox for the fire department, so they do have the ability of entering it every time.
Are the vehicles coming in off of Washington most of the time or only off of town?
No, only off of Town Road, I have absolutely no, no, and have no intentions of opening up that gate that's on Washington Street. It's because there'd be, there'd be no way for a transporter to be able to either make that turn without stopping traffic. So everybody comes up to Town Road, heads south, and then goes down to the south gate.
Down in there, did they recommend a fence all the way around or no? Only, um.
You say they, um, the.
Like, uh, planning commission or the ones that have done the, uh, the findings of fact.
The property is fenced all around.
So.
It is all the way around?
Already fenced.
Oh, okay.
It's fenced with.
With a chain link, right? Okay.
Right.
Okay.
So staff suggestion for consideration from the plan commission was to add screening along the west fence line so it's not visible from Washington Street.
Hmm. Yeah, I could see them driving down Washington and seeing it from the west. The building kind of blocks everything that you see from, you know, coming.
From the east.
From the east end to the west, that building kind of blocks everything. Um, you might see some stuff from town going northbound. Uh. So I don't know what they recommend there too.
And from coming north on town, there is quite a bit of vegetation and.
Okay.
So it's kind of there, so it's it's naturally screened.
Kind of blocked on.
And other than the gate that is right up against the vegetation at the far south end by the railroad tracks, we have privacy fence the whole rest of the area also.
Was.
That exposure.
Besides the beautification from the gentleman that sent us the letter, did he state that he didn't like the way this looked or there were too many trucks, there was nothing in there?
There was nothing.
That's what I would think would be a concern to anyone, you know, and as long as he's, you know.
Well, you've already addressed his concern.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, other than we be in the paths, the trucks are just, folks are up twelve, thirteen foot and up above the six foot fencing, but none of these vehicles way back with even with our shingle consideration where we would do double pallets, but nothing that we have on our property exceeds five foot along the six foot fence.
Okay. Any other questions for him? If there are no more questions, you can be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the planning commission, uh, and no one else from the public wishing to speak, let's entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. The public hearing is closed. Review, let's see, and recommendations for twenty five dash fifteen. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval of case P C twenty five fifteen with the conditions recommended by staff in the report and to incorporate the findings of fact drafted by staff in the report.
Well, I mean, do you take out the one recommendations and you strike it out and?
Which one, Tom?
Which one?
What about it, Tom? He's already done it.
He's done it.
So we have to take it out because he's done it or?
Or has he fully done it?
Well. So it's staff's recommendation was adding privacy screening along the west fence line. The fencing is there, it's a chain link fence. Uh, so what the recommendation was was adding privacy screening to that fence. Um, so that's the west line, not the one that's parallel, so it's perpendicular to Washington Street, not the one that is along Washington parallel to it, that one is is fully screened.
So with that recommendation, he'd have to do that, then, and keep that there.
If if that's, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be fair. What do you guys think?
Seems fine, he knows that he already did it.
Well, but he said he did the Washington side, he needs to do the other side that's not on Washington, if I'm not mistaken, am I correct?
But he said he did everything.
I've already.
You've done both sides?
Yes, sir.
So the north end and the west end.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I guess, do you want to stricken it or because it doesn't matter that it gets.
We make it else it's already done.
I guess you're trying to.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so why don't we recommend?
So conditions two and three, staff report.
I think we should keep recommendation. Even it's already done, so I don't see a need to remove it.
No, just saying that it's.
Done, so.
Yeah.
There's no need to mention anything about that, we're asking this to be done. That way, something changes down the road and, you know, under this usage, we're still looking for that to be screened.
Okay. Sounds good. Let's see. So acting chair John, would you like to call a roll?
Um, was there, did we have?
Motion.
Okay.
I did do a motion prior to that, a, but then we discussed, should I do the motion again?
So a motion by Commissioner Benaziac and then was there a second?
I, I think.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Benaziac.
Aye.
Commissioner Billingsley.
Aye.
Commissioner Slattery, Commissioner Sarazos.
Aye.
Acting chairperson Hankin.
Aye.
Five, yes, zero, no, motion carries. So this will then go to the development committee next Monday, September eighth at six o'clock in the same room.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now on to public hearing, case number P C twenty five eighteen. I see.
Now.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case P C twenty five eighteen.
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of the opposed and nay. John, please give us a background after being sworn in.
He's on the floor to protect these proceedings.
I do. All right, thank you. Wait, let's move it up on the projector, so.
Take your turn.
This is a request from West Chicago School District thirty three for approval of three zoning variances at eighteen twenty West Roosevelt Road uh, to construct parking stalls at the McCauley School property. Uh, the proposed parking stalls are for the future use of the school for administrative offices. So the three zoning variances that school district is seeking include a zoning variance from section eleven point two dash two C one to allow front yard parking, front yard parking setback of fifteen feet in lieu of the minimum required twenty feet. Zoning variance from section eleven point two dash two C two to allow a side yard parking setback of ten feet in lieu of the minimum required fifteen feet and a zoning variance from section eleven point two dash two C four to allow a rear yard parking setback of five feet in lieu of the minimum required fifteen feet. So staff does recommend approval of the requested zoning variances and has included findings of fact demonstrating uh, this recommendation, if I can get this on screen, I was gonna show the layout of the site. So, um, this doesn't work on this, but so the three zoning variances include the front yard setback, the parking along West Roosevelt and then the side yard setback reduction along this west property line. And then there is a actual rear yard that's located right here because of the side configuration of the site. So this is actually five feet instead of the fifteen feet required. So based on this configuration, how there is this kind of jetting out of the property location of the McCauley School, which isn't going to be relocated, there's a very narrow space in between these two points that they can work with. And also given the location that they have for the, because of this, if they were to shift the parking further down, that would cause this drive aisle to be shifted further down, which wouldn't be able to do that because of the property line. And then shifting this over would cause a disturbance with the accessibility, um, to the school. Uh, so as as I mentioned, staffs are recommending approval of the zoning variances. We do have representatives from the school district present this evening to provide any additional information and answer any questions. And I can also answer any questions from the line commission.
Would the petitioner like to give a presentation? Please state your name and address.
We're Dan Malek. Um, civil engineer representing the school district.
Thank you.
Place of work addresses fifty five Schuylkill Boulevard, suite three seventy five, Naperville, Illinois, six oh five, six three. And I just wanted to go up there and say, I think John has summarized this and the challenges with this site very well. Um, we're handed a property that was a schoolhouse built around eighteen hundred, um, historic place, uh, restroom, store places. So the amount that we can really do to change the site layout is minimal with stuff with what we can do, and I think the school's got a great opportunity here to to use this to their benefit, to really improve this property. And I'm hoping that these solutions that we've put forth solve complicated problem with size of the site and historic use of the property, behavior, accessibility, and even the stormwater requirements of DuPage County, we all have. So, um, is acceptable to coach, so to say. Um, I also have, I could, you know, with the school just appear, if you have any questions that you would like to ask about the various being requested.
Are there any questions for the petitioner?
Sure, what's the other thing that it's for?
Abuse of office space. Which is affirmative use within the, I'm just.
In the industry, current.
Do they currently have an office? Where is it? Uh, they do, they have the the district office appears at Forest Drive, like Gary's Field, Lincoln School. It's G twelve Forest Drive, that's their main office, I'm with office space and other areas. Um, but they need more space, if you've ever been in that building, they have desks, desk in the hallways and. Is this gonna be a supplemental or is this gonna be the main? Ministry of Urban supplemental. And. Purpose of sign off, do they look at the property or they? National Registry. Certain places.
Well, this is, it's not a locally landmarked property, uh, so from the local jurisdiction, uh, there's no review. Uh, so, and because right now the zoning variance is just dealing with the site, um, that's not subject to those state and federal regulations, so anything.
Be later on.
That would be beneficial.
What was the note in your plans to follow? Spaces required. For. You provide a plan? I think the spaces required based off the square pointing to the goal.
We're talking about parking spaces, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay, just making sure.
We're gonna have a lot of people in small buildings. I don't know the exact way out of how many desks and what is, but I do want to tell you that part of the reason for the spaces is, um, for visitors, so anybody that needs to come uh, parents from the school that feel totally people, the brain reasons, just have stalls there. Parents from the school that feel totally people in the brain, because it's time to sell there. Yeah, um, that's a good question. So, uh, that's a. Potential future of Charlotte area. Um, we haven't put any design towards it. It's just an idea of something that. Doesn't require zoning variation, but something the the school district is considering. Um, I think that they're they're putting forward a good effort to. Not only remediate the historic, I miss the building, but to improve the site and the landscape plans also show very well. The clients in village. So it's not, it's concept, it's not all that, man, that's it is.
They should look at alternate configurations for the parking on the east side.
Yeah, yes. There's two pieces of difficulty there, that are three really, when I go into that, um. One, the main access that's used on the side right now is in the rocks in the area of our new access, uh, which also their IDOP permit process. The east side of the site. And you won't notice that everything at the plants, but the the door into the building is about four feet off the ground. So if you would see on the southeast fourth of the building, you see this kind of rectangular sidewalk. That goes around to provide A D A accessible access to the building. Because it's. It's like a half basement underneath it and the main floor is elevated. So. We're not allowed to do with. How do I put this? Um, we're very limited from a historic perspective, what we can do to build or change it. So, um, we need that area to get that accessible access into the.
Ramp or whatever they put there.
How many, uh? What is normal usage on this as far as, uh, parking spaces? Cause it only got like twelve, it looks like, or twelve.
This, this would be, um, it'd be four per thousand. So they they have seen. Yeah, they have.
Okay, good.
Twenty-one parking stalls.
Yeah. I see ten down there, eleven up there.
Okay.
What was the entrance be modified?
Yeah, so IDOP requires a, um, permit anytime you have a change of. Further than that, this building doesn't have modern. Uh, connections and the connections for the sewerman and waterman with the scene are on the opposite side of Roosevelt Road. Meaning that we have to pour underneath IDOP, which also involves IDOP under permit process. It's a complicated project for such a small site.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? If there are no more questions from the planning commission and no one else from the public wishes to speak. Undertain a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The public hearing is now closed. Review and recommendation of PC twenty-five eighteen. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval of case PC twenty-five eighteen with the condition recommended by staff. In the report and incorporating the findings of fact drafted by the staff in the report. Uh, John, please call the roll.
So we hit a motion and second to close the public hearing. I don't want to create a motion and second.
That recommendation. Okay, on recommendation, let's, uh, motion.
So.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
All right.
John, please call the roll.
Commissioner Slattery.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Benaziac.
Aye.
Commissioner Billingsley.
Aye.
Commissioner Chrazas.
Aye.
Acting Chairperson Hankin.
Aye.
All right, five yes, zero no, motion carries. This will go then to the Development Committee next Monday, September eighth. In this room at six o'clock.
Thank you. Public hearing of case PC twenty. Uh, entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case PC twenty-five dash twenty. Second.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. John, please give us background after being sworn in.
Sure.
You sound for affirmative truth and protect the best of your ability.
I do. All right, so we're gonna talk about, uh, this petition twenty-five twenty and also a little bit of twenty-five nineteen, which goes along with it, so. Um, this came, this is a zoning text amendment that essentially came from the petitioner for the next petition. Uh, which is. Uh, West Chicago Volleyball LLC doing business is Shai City Volleyball. And they are requesting a zoning text amendment. To define and place within the manufacturing district, the land use category. Of an indoor sports facility, which an indoor sports facility is a permitted use within the B two, B three. Districts because it is included within our definition of a indoor recreation and amusement. There is no definition for indoor sports facility though, and like I said, it would only be allowed in the B two or B three district. Uh, so. West Chicago Volleyball LLC is proposing to locate at a property that is three forty-eight Charles Court. That is located within the manufacturing district. It's a warehouse building constructed, um, back in twenty twenty-two, and they are proposing to lease about eight-six thousand square feet of space. For, um, for their volleyball space. To do so, however, there does need to be a zoning text amendment that would allow. The use of an indoor sports facility within the manufacturing district. So staff has drafted based on common definitions within, uh, land use categories for an indoor sports facility. Um, the definition, which is included in your packet, would have it on the screen, but apparently the projector overheated. And, uh, so also proposing to list this land use category as a special use within the manufacturing district. So for this petition, we're just talking about the zoning text amendment, dealing with the indoor sports facility, the concept of having it within the. Manufacturing district and then the very next petition would be the request for the special use permit, so. Um, so if there's any questions on the the definition, um, I can answer those and then also just the, uh. Then placing this within the manufacturing district as a special use permit.
Are there any existing facilities in B two and B three?
There are no, uh, just strict, and well, we do have one indoor sports facility in the B two that predates our indoor. Recreation and amusement that's on Roosevelt Road. It's located in the B two, but since we have had the, um. Since we've had the land use category of indoor recreation and amusement. We just have the one which is, uh, Kids Empire. Um, so that's not, it's not an indoor sports facility per se, but it is that overarching indoor recreational amusement, so.
Oh, are you talking about the zone two?
So this would cover that.
Would the petitioner like to give a presentation?
And they they might maybe present it the next, the very next petition that we have, cause that's their actual, uh, special.
Okay, okay, so we'll go.
So I know it's kind of destroying.
Yeah, I see that there's like four different areas here with the same number. Uh, are there any questions? That we have on this portion of the subject? No. Okay, um, any comments from the public? On this portion of the subject, so. So if there are no more questions, uh, for the planning commission and no one else, uh, from the public wishing to speak. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The public hearing is closed. Now we're gonna go to the next.
Don't we, no, don't we have?
Now we're gonna go to review and recommendation of this case of twenty-five dash twenty. So entertain a motion to recommend an approval of case twenty-five, PC twenty-five twenty. With the condition recommended by staff in the report and to incorporate the findings of fact drafted by staff in the report. Motion?
Oh.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
John, please call the roll.
Commissioner Slattery. Uh, Commissioner Billingsley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benaziac.
Aye.
Commissioner Chrazas.
Aye.
Acting Chairperson Hankin.
Aye.
Five yes, zero no.
Now I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case PC twenty-five dash twenty.
I'm sorry, and that's my fault.
Motion? Second.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the, I, all those opposed say nay. John, please give us background after being sworn in.
I do. Okay, so this is a request from West Chicago Volleyball LLC doing business as Shai Shai City Volleyball. Um, for the property at three forty-eight Charles Court for a special use permit in the manufacturing district for. An indoor sports facility, uh, the property that is being proposed, it is a. Two hundred and sixty thousand square foot cross道warehouse structure constructed in, uh, twenty twenty-two. As a two hundred and thirty-four parking stalls, uh, located at two access points off of Charles Court. Um, the petitioner is looking to lease about eighty-six thousand square feet of space. Within the warehouse facility for the indoor sports facility for League One Volleyball. Which is comprised of, uh, professional volleyball league, a junior volleyball, and a community outreach initiative. Uh, the facility will primarily serve as a training and competition venue for the junior volleyball program. Will also host power league events and community programs on a limited basis. Facility will feature multiple volleyball courts, dedicated training areas, ancillary spaces for locker rooms, offices and stuff. Um, the petitioner is proposing to add in addition, in addition to what the parking that is located on the property. They're looking to add an additional one hundred and twenty-one parking stalls. That would be on the west side of the building at the dock area that will no longer be used because it's now going to be where the. Um, volleyball space is going to be, so that would bring a total of three hundred and forty parking stalls. On the property, they're also working with the property directly across the street for an additional, uh, one hundred. Parking stalls is to serve as overflow. Um, which is, uh, oh, I should say they're working with, uh, to obtain a parking agreement with that property owner. Um, so staff is recommending approval of the proposed special use permit with the condition that a certificate of occupancy, um. Or I'm sorry, that prior to the issue, it tends of a certificate of occupancy, the proposed parking area on the east side. Uh, be striped in accordance with their striping plan. We have drafted findings of fact for consideration from the plan commission. And, uh, we do have the petitioner present this evening to, uh, provide additional information and answer any questions, and I can also answer any questions.
Okay. Would the, uh, petitioner like to give a presentation? Yes, thank you. Please state your name and address and then be sworn in.
Uh, Jamie Lyons, uh, fifty-three twelve, Howard Avenue in Western Springs, Illinois, six zero five five eight. Um, I believe you will have the presentation that was shared in advance, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, John. Um, but just to speak a little bit more, I'm here representing League One Volleyball or Love as we like to call ourselves. And, um, we are a community of youth clubs, volleyball clubs across the country where today we're. Seventy-nine clubs across, I believe, twenty-six states of which Shai City is is one of those and. Jason's here representing them today as a, as one of the club directors. And, um, you know, we're, we're here today to obviously, um, speak about the, the facility and the opportunities here. Currently, the club is, is based out Zone two fifty in, in, uh, West Chicago. And, uh, we'll be delighted to be able to continue to stay in the West Chicago community as well, continue to provide the volleyball. Programs and, uh, and opportunities that can serve the, the local, uh, families and, uh, and young children as well. Currently, the club is three hundred players strong, around thirty teams. It's growing. It's in year three of its existence. And has a, has a thriving youth program as well, and, uh, you know, this facility will help us to continue to grow and, and offer those opportunities that. That they can do through volleyball. And, uh, from our side as, as a love, uh, organization. You know, we're looking to support them in those endeavors and, and, uh, and hope that they can do so through, through this, uh, means. And, uh, the additional opportunities through events and such that was described, uh, by John. Uh, would obviously offer, offer that economic development opportunity as well for the West Chicago city itself, so. How to take questions?
Are there any questions from the petitioner?
So for the storage, or is this leased? Do you guys own the whole facility or is it leased for somebody else and then you guys? Are on the available space?
Yes, it'd be leased through the other, the owners, of which would be leasing the eighty-six thousand.
So I'll. Double down on that question. So there's two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Square feet. You're doing eighty-some odd thousand.
Correct.
Who is using the other hundred and sixty thousand?
Good question. You stumped me there.
Okay, is there anybody in there yet this moment or no? There's no manufacturing and nothing else.
Well, there's not manufacturing, but it's just warehousing.
It's just warehousing. And do you think it's being used as warehouse?
There, there's activity on that. Yeah, there's trucks.
And my only concern is, being as it is, it is a single dealer building. It is a dual purpose building now that you're trying to get to use. With kids coming in and out, trucks going in and out, what are the safety precautions that we have based on that?
Well.
Question.
I mean, the, uh, what's being. Proposed as far as parking is all within existing parking spaces or new parking spaces that are near the door, the entrance.
Right.
Uh, to here, so where trucks would be pulling through, it's not really located where and there would be any pedestrians, so pedestrians.
So the trucks are on a different section of this property?
Right, and when this building was designed, like many warehouse buildings, the truck traffic is. Is pushed off to the side with vehicular parking or pedestrian parking. Um, that is closer to the building.
Does the city approve or review this, um, parking plan? It's pretty extensive.
Yeah, yes. So the, the permit would still have to be applied for, for the striping of them.
So as far as the parking goes, since there's a tenant of the other leased part. Can you recap which parking you guys are gonna be using? Are you using just the east and south? Or also the north side?
East and correct me, correct me wrong, Jason, east and south? Yeah, so, um, it would be east where we would kind of be re-stripping without the dock area.
Can you, if you'd like to come up, state your name, address, and also get sworn in. Thank you. You only have to do it once.
Jason Getzick. Uh, I live at twenty-nine twenty White Pine Drive, Northbrook, Illinois, six zero zero six two. I am one of the, uh, associate directors of Shai City Volleyball. Um, as far as the parking situation, um, our, our operation on the weekdays, um, kind of does not. Touch the, the mass parking situation, um, because we're not hosting events, it's more so practice. Um, but so that would be, uh, fitting with that east side where those docks are, we'd re-strike that. And then all that parking along that bank on the south side, um, would suffice, um, during the week. And then, um, on the nights that we were, I'm sorry, the weekends that we would host or ideally host events, that's when. Uh, we would work with our neighbors and that parking agreement situation, um, along with that overflow parking that John kind of discussed. Um, and so that would kind of be what we were looking at.
Again, based on, from this aerial. There's a good. Twenty-five, thirty trucks within this unit, and the only way they can go out is whether or not you're parking out the east side or the west side. And the only way they can go out is whether or not you're parking out the east side or the west side. Sorry, yeah, east side or the west side, and there are even trucks, it looks like in the front, if I see that correctly. What part of the building, because I can't tell from this nor from the pictures that we have?
It's uh.
It's the southeast corner.
Okay, uh that's not ours.
It's, it should be uh. If you flip through.
Sorry about that. Okay, so you guys are basically where the entrances are.
Correct, just in the, on the, the, the south entrance, I guess would be that. Um, as you can see on the other pictures, there's a, there's a bank of.
You're on the southwest corner. Basically, if I see this correct.
Southeast corner, east corner.
Southeast.
Charles Court. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two on Charles Court, two on these. Yeah, there's a south entrance and another, I guess it would be a north entrance, we would be on the south portion.
So there's a bank there?
Uh, so I, if you look on the south portion, um right at the south port of the building, um there's a bank of uh parking spots.
Oh, no, actually.
No, sorry, not, not a real van. My apologies. Um, I'm, and then there is an access portion that um when we were kind of um been there a couple times, uh trucks like to use, um there's like that little I don't know, access point um that takes them around to the back of the building.
Hmm.
Um, now, uh we were in kind of communication that like technically that's not their access point, if their, the truck warehouse would be up at the top. But um again, all their, all of their traffic is done um by the time that our practices are starting in the evenings.
Okay. I think that, that would be.
A real big share of the property.
Uh, is, correct, correct. That's correct.
Are there any more questions for them?
Are you having food concessions in this?
Still, um, we, we are working towards a kind of getting that built out as far as what we are, we're looking for, we have not gotten that far yet. So. Uh, you know, typically at any type of event, there's, you know, your traditional concessions, not, you know, or not gourmet house, but like your sandwiches, your hot dogs, it's a diner.
But with our new ordinance, they can do seasonal.
Trucks still bring, John?
Uh, food trucks, yes. Oh, we'd love that. I'm a food truck, yeah.
Are there any other questions for the petitioners? No?
Thank you.
You can sit down. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Let's see, no comments. If there are no more questions from the planning commission and or no one else from the public wishing to speak, let's entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Second?
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Public hearing is closed. Review and recommendation of PC twenty-five twenty. Uh, entertain a motion to recommend approval of PC twenty-five twenty in the conditions recommended by staff in the report and to incorporate the finding of fact drafted by staff in the report.
I think with some of the discussion we had, I think we should modify it.
I agree.
Um, I think possible consideration is a recommendation that they sort out with their co-leaser of the building, you know, uh use of those parking spots when the business is not in service. Because right now the only uh condition is, is restriping everything.
Okay.
So what do you think about adding something that says that, hey, they sort out parking sharing with their co-leaser?
Say have a, a parking agreement in place.
Parking agreement in place, um at least before they have occupancy, I guess. Which I guess goes with one since prior to occupancy. And then I think the Brad point is there more discussion, Brad, on um traffic patterns and, and safety.
So in, in the most of the drawings, you can kind of see the way that they have, whether if it's a berm wall, whatever it is, from this angle, you can't tell. It looks like it may just be a curb. Um, that kind of dictates where the trucks flow, left, uh top and bottom, or however you want to look at it. I'm looking at the large picture right now. Um, it appears since the trucks don't seem to be going through where the cars would go through their, I mean, wouldn't be anything that would uh put anybody in jeopardy based on that, provided they're of course going straight into the building. Yeah, I'm looking at this one. Can you tell me where the door is located?
Uh, so, yeah, this is your spray.
Right, show me again.
Here, right there, yeah.
Okay. So that. In this exhibit, I know you're not gonna be able to see it from there. This is your occupancy. Door is here. Most cars are probably gonna park here. Knowing that, they've got to walk wherever the trucks are. What time do you guys usually?
Our, our practices typically start after four P M. Because they have obvious, most of our athletes are in school.
Okay, makes sense.
And so um we don't ever really start any programming before four P M. On weekdays.
Okay.
And um, you know, we're in there until about nine, nine-thirty.
So here, here's, here's a question and a proposal. And I know trucks are gonna be coming in and out, they're not stopping at four.
Oh.
You know, I mean, they're stopping at five, maybe six max. I get that. But during maybe a certain hour period, they can only use the one end to get in and out. I, I don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to protect anybody from not having something happen that will be then you know, having concerns about. Um, because no matter what, anybody that parks on that side has to walk into the street. Or is this curb here?
The perimeter drive around property, John?
They're in the perimeter.
So there's parking is kind of very.
There's, right, there's a landscape island.
There's a landscape island where we're gonna have to walk down the street. Yeah, just it, without having other than the aerial views, it shows that little
The, there's.
Section here.
The ninety um eight parking spots on the south end of the building.
Yes.
None of those parking spots, you have to cross to get from parking spot to building with, there will be no truck.
Why don't you come up so that way it can be recorded and we can hear you? Go ahead, sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
Go ahead.
Uh, on the, on this, like I said, on the south portion of the building, um there's ninety-eight parking stalls.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and, and to get access into the building, you, there would be no interaction, walking to with any trucks. Um, I was.
Show me, show me your picture just to see if it's any different than what I'm kind of looking at, because I'm looking at this here.
Yep.
That being this, they're gonna have to, because trucks are gonna, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Trucks are gonna run here, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's okay.
It's the same basic.
Yeah. Um, we were, we were gonna end up putting a double door.
Uh-huh.
Because there is one, a, a single door at this entry point right here.
Okay.
Um, so we would be removing, like, I think, two stalls um right about here. Um, so that.
So this is all parking?
All parking.
Okay.
And then the trucks currently kind of take this.
And if you have a door here, then that alleviates them from having to go onto the street to come around your door that's here, if I'm correct.
You're, you're spot on.
So is that gonna come in before you open?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, is that in there?
Well, you can add that in there, that the.
Okay, the doors?
Access door.
On the south end?
Yes, that's what I'm calling south.
Yeah, um. I mean, based on.
Yeah.
But I think it's south, is it, would that be south?
That's, yeah, the southeast corner.
Okay.
Now, they, they, the trucks um at Goggins Warehouse, um so, some do go in on the north entry and then go back and then come back out the north.
Um. But a lot of them probably go in one way and come out the other way, you can't.
Exactly, we don't have.
But I think maybe a signage.
I agree.
That could be put there saying after three o'clock or whatever, four o'clock, please exit the building on the east end instead of the south end.
Yep.
Or, sorry, north end instead of the south end.
Yep.
Are you getting all this? Good. By the way, it's my first time doing.
This is my first time doing something like this as well, so.
So we're both learning.
Yes. Am I?
Alright.
Am I, you guys, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, signage exiting at the south end.
Yeah, 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 after like four P M. Or three P M., whatever you think is viable. So we need signage. And knowing that they're gonna put a door on the south end. Are there already something there that opens up?
Uh, there's just a single um door. On that.
On that side, but you're just gonna make a larger door.
Or, or.
Okay, so larger door on the south end for entrance. Does that sound good? Any? Questions, comments?
Probably changes parking configuration as you're probably gonna lose a couple of spots.
Were you worried?
Well, there's nothing on here that shows a.
Well, the city staff reviewed parking.
With, you're referring to the double door.
So you don't go there.
Yeah, on the south, if you're gonna put a door on the south.
I guess I'm not sure how the doors would cause the parking to be lost. There is a.
There's a door there already, you're just making a little larger one.
You don't have any building plans?
Uh, we, we do have as well plans uh for this building. But I, the door there would be, there would be a walkway from the parking area.
And that could be the green area that's kind of shaded in green.
There's.
That could be a walkway.
There are small walkways and you can kind, you very faintly see them.
It's very difficult in the.
It's not that green or anything. So there would be a small walkway there right now, so what they'd have to do is just expand that walkway.
And the best pictures, see that? Is this one, because you can see where there are two indents? It kind of show that there is something there. Um, it's just hard because of the way the aerial view is to be able to, in such a big building, to be able to see exactly where that, but it shows a lighter color there where the sidewalk is, or I would presume it.
Those are, yeah, there, those are access doors.
Yeah.
With the small sidewalk.
Yeah. So that alleviates, I think, a lot of it from having any potential scenarios, no?
I'm not buying it.
Okay, what do you propose?
I said, I think you're gonna lose a couple of parking spots that you can make room for.
Oh, you mean as far as the parking spots? Well, they were already adding, weren't they?
You're adding one hundred and twenty-one parking stalls on the west side of the building.
So requirements from Senator?
It would, yeah, the, the requirement would be met with, by adding those one, with what they have now on the property.
That would be to the east side.
On the east side, I'm sorry.
The city's review of the parking plan, did that include the lease agreements or is that?
This just included the property, it's the, the entirety of the property. The agreement across the street would be overflow parking, that would put them above and beyond what's required.
Was the city review that agreement?
Uh, no, because I don't believe that's been, that hasn't been finalized yet.
Was that the requirement?
Uh, that, that's, not to meet their parking requirement, that's not on site. So this would be something extra that would be for their parking needs, but not for what the minimum parking requirement requires.
Any other questions or recommendations? If they lose one or two parking spaces because they're widening up the door there with that.
Uh, then they should add one or two parking spaces that they're adding.
Okay.
Will it be back to the same space?
Not necessarily, because there is a little entry walk, there is sidewalk leading on that south end of the building. Um, that's already, already uh existing.
Gotcha. Yeah, that would have been, that would have made sense at all that you guys would lose it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right. You wanna tell us what you think we've got so far?
Well, so the conditions that have been stated would be prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy that the parking agreement is in place. Um, the uh shared parking across the street, install a double door at the southeast corner um for an entryway, and then signage exiting at the south end as required. Signage that we installed requiring exiting at the south end after three P M.
Okay. Any other questions? Are we okay with that? I'm looking at you.
I just.
You still think?
I don't think this was complete enough as submit.
I.
I think it's squishy. Way it was.
I like that word. Um. So they haven't pulled or, or done a summit at all?
I don't see.
To. Yeah, that door, because they're gonna have to push it to be opened, you know, and why?
Yeah.
With this uh headers or. Um. What is the objective of opening the facility? Beyond whatever the control is on West Chicago and letting you in there, what is your objective?
Summer first.
December first, okay. Um. Yeah, I mean, is, uh, I think you also have to put in there that they're gonna be pulling a permit for the door before, I, you know, before uh opening. So they're gonna have to apply for a permit to get that door in there too. Does that help at all?
Sure.
So we do a motion?
Yeah, uh, anybody else from the public want to make any comments? No? Okay, is there no more questions from the planning commission and no one else? Planning commission and no one else from the public wishing to speak, let's entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
We actually did.
I don't get that, I did that, right?
I. Yeah, you get that. Fifteen minutes, Commissioner Slattery moved, Commissioner Benesia seconded.
Okay. Then we're gonna do remove, review and recommendation.
Yes.
For P C twenty twenty five. Uh. Entertained motion to recommend approval of P C twenty five twenty with the conditions recommended by staff in the report and incorporate the findings of fact drafted by staff. In the report.
Sorry, I think this is twenty five.
Twenty five nineteen.
Twenty five nineteen, yes, we're back to that again, sorry about that. Thank you.
Uh I'll move on that motion, twenty five nineteen.
Thanks. Second?
Second.
Okay. John, please call a roll.
Commissioner Slattery, uh Commissioner Tarazas.
Aye.
Commissioner Benesia.
Abstained.
Commissioner Billingsley.
Aye.
Acting Chairperson Henkin.
Aye.
Or yes, zero, no, one abstention. So motion carries. With those conditions, so this will go to the development committee next Monday, September eighth, uh in this room at six o'clock.
And very much thank you guys.
Thank you. You got. Too many, yes, too many, nineteen to twenty, yeah, so I've got nineteen, nineteen, nineteen here now.
I always send anything, not for anything to be invalidated and then to just come back.
Yeah, 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 very true, you got, oh yeah.
This one. So there's the.
Um.
With the north entrance, this is the north entrance, there will be less.
Now, we're gonna go to public hearings of case P C twenty five seventeen. Uh entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case P C twenty five seventeen.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay. John, please give us some background after.
Alright, we're in.
Do you sound this part of work, don't you? We're connecting to the season to invest your government.
I do. Okay, so this is an amendment to the future land use map that is actually making a correction, um. There is a property, it's actually the old drive in movie theater, uh Cascade Drive in movie theater property, portion of that uh property. There, I should say the majority of that property was placed within the future land use category of corridor commercial, except for the back portion, which was. Wrongously placed in parks and open space. Which was almost like a bleed over from the. Um property itself, which is the forest preserve. Uh so this, this is an error because we cannot. Uh take away their ability to develop that property, they have to have some. Uh land use category that gives them the ability to develop it by placing it in parks and open space, we're essentially putting a deed restriction on it, that it can't be developed for anything, it has to remain as an open space. Um so this proposal is to correct that um error. We are going to be doing a uh. An amendment to the com- or an update to the comprehensive plan. So we'll have a new future land use plan, but we wanted to correct this and have this map. Complete going forward with when the comprehensive plan is updated.
Hadn't they already, or was it just uh uh? Did they not many years ago wanna change it to, cause they were gonna build homes there at some point? So weren't they trying to change it then and it never was changed?
Uh well, the the, so the history of the development of this property is once the Cascade Theater closed, uh and they tried to reopen uh the theater. Staff had recommended that they rezone the property to commercial. And um there was a desire to keep it as what the current zoning is, which is ER one estate residence, which could give them the ability to.
To go home.
Buy homes on there, a uh land use category of open space, though, would eliminate that potential. That, so they they still have that zoning right to develop the property.
Okay.
Either the current zoning or if they were to rezone it, first of the future.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? If there are no more questions, uh any or any of the planning commissioners have questions, go ahead.
The area north of. Wheaton Academy. It's not up to the Prairie Path that line? Green area north, do they own that, said, or my, is there another?
Uh so there is, there's forest preserve property that's located around, they, so that is um. It's not shown on here, but there is a creek that's located that kind of wraps around that purple. Uh the.
Purple is forming America.
Forming America.
And south of that is Prairie Path. Is that the last one, is that?
About that is the western trail, was that, right?
And south of that, I thought. South of that is public land, I thought the school bought that, the.
They did a land swap, didn't they? Yeah, a portion of that is is uh owned by the county. Where the uh the trail is, so a small portion of that may be placed, so. There could be some area there too, that's um. Where Wheaton Academy's property is, that showing is open space as well.
It doesn't give it to that fine level detail.
Yeah, right, right, now, this, this um. The way this map was laid out, it doesn't give that specific detail on it, doesn't have parcel by parcel information.
This one in question is pretty.
It's it's very clear, yeah, got it.
Any more questions? If there are no more questions from the planning mission and no one else in the public wishes to speak. Uh I will entertain, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Seconds.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. This public hearing is closed. Review and recommendation of case P C twenty five seventeen. I will entertain a motion to recommend approval of case P C twenty five seventeen with the conditions recommended by staff in the report and incorporate the findings of fact drafted by staff in the report.
So.
So move.
Second? This is to close it.
Second.
Thank you. Uh John, please call a roll.
I'm sorry, I didn't get, so this is a recommendation.
The the recommendation is what staff has concluded.
And so the motion for that was Commissioner Billingsley?
Commissioner Tarazas.
Yeah, Tarazas.
And second invite? Okay. Commissioner Tarazas.
Aye.
Commissioner Billingsley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benesia.
Aye.
Commissioner Slattery.
Aye.
Acting Chair Henkin.
Aye.
Five, yes, zero, no, motion carries.
Very good. Old business, new business, adjournment, is there any old business to discuss?
Don't have any, except uh so our last meeting, we had two zoning text amendments that were both approved, the chicken ordinance and the temporary outside seasonal events. Uh that was approved and um.
Chicken ordinance, as in we can't have chickens.
You can have chickens.
You can have chickens.
I missed that.
My kids are gonna love that.
Missed that one?
I missed that.
It was, yeah, that was a good one, there was nice definitions and you know, what you have to do, what you can do, where you can look at things, how you can take care of.
Did people show up to the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
There were quite a few.
Very um.
Yeah, I missed that one, wow, my kids have wanted chickens for years, not.
Putting your hots around what you have to do, you have humans.
Let's go wash your cup.
And you can have the the structure needed to be. How far from the property.
That stuff is goats.
There are no stairs, right?
Yeah.
And so with that, because it is new, um we are going to review that text in next year to see. How many, if there's any complaints, what type of complaints, if there's anything in the ordinance that should be. Maybe more stringent, maybe looser in some areas where it's not necessary, so we're gonna do a review of of that ordinance.
We as you or we as?
We as the the planner.
But based upon soliciting input from. Zone uh compliance.
So a lot of what it will be is um.
Possible complaints.
Complaints, just we're monitoring any complaints that we receive um to see if there needs to be any modifications um to.
Was uh fence required or anything, or what was?
There's a.
I wasn't here, so I don't remember exactly what the.
Yeah, it's actually in the the minutes.
Oh, it's in the minutes in here?
It's back it, so there's thirteen.
Conditions?
Thirteen conditions.
That's a lot of conditions.
And so there is a chicken run and a chicken coop that is required. One thing we did get rid of, you remember was the uh. Phrasing of trespassers, our chicken coops have to be maintained that prevents trespassers, cause then because that was very vague, the trespasser was.
So the committee moved. Forward?
Yeah, um yeah, and the city council, um city council adopted it, so.
No slaughtering is permitted on the subject's property. So glad we put that in there.
Yeah.
Wait, we can't sell the eggs? You, yes, you can.
Uh you, yeah, you can. So that that was taken out.
Oh.
Oh, that was removed? That was removed, interesting.
I'm just wondering, is there a fence requirement?
Six.
Is there a fence requirement?
Uh not a fence requirement, just.
Oh, you could have chickens run in your neighbor's yard by accident, uh cause that.
They they have to, they do have to be confined.
I get that, but they're gonna get to come out sometimes, you're gonna go in and get the egg and they run out and like you're chasing. Anyways, uh. Is there uh any other old business?
Uh no.
Okay, any new business?
Uh so. No, none, none that I have uh for now, so.
Okay, I'll entertain then to. A motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, we're gonna time it here.
Yeah. Is that it?
Uh then I could. Follow voice vote.
Uh voice vote. Um all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay. All done?